All right, let's start this thing. Hi, I am Coach Ashley. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Killian. Hey, guys.
Hey, hey, everybody.
Hello. We also have Julie from our team here. And we are here today to help you grow your young living business. So we're really excited that you've taken the time out of your day to join us. This is a free call that we open to all of Team Young Living. Every single week at noon Eastern, you do not have to be a Get Oiling member to to join these calls and to benefit from what we share here, but we certainly hope that you will give us a try. We are a dollar for your first month at getoiling.com and we have plans to help you manage your young living business from distributor or brand partners getting started all the way up to Royal Crown. And we serve many, 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 many folks at all levels. And we're all excited to have you here today. So speaking of you, where are you from? Let us know in the comments. I would love to hear from you. I'm actually looking for quite a lot of discussion here today. We're talking about follow-ups. That means conversation. So we're going to talk today. Let's kick that off by letting us know where in the world you are. So we're excited to have you here, like I mentioned, because this is our favorite time of the week. This is an opportunity for us to, you know, get as close to seeing each other as possible. In some cases, if you want to work one-on-one or chat together, we'll bring you out. Matter of fact, while we're on that, we do have space available today. If you would like to have work together, like if you want some insights, you want help with something, you want a review of your work, go over to the Q and A, please. And the first two will be able to get those, those spots available here at the close of our training here today. So look, we've got Boise, Idaho, Connecticut, Ellensburg, Washington, Stapleton, Alabama, Central Wisconsin, Erie, PA, Saskatchewan, Canada. What is up, you guys? We're so excited to have you here. We are, we're all over the place here as well. In case you guys didn't know, Greg and Amanda are in North Dakota. I have been upstate New York in the Catskills and Julie is, let's all get jealous, in Florida. All right, so let's go over hello from Singapore. Hi, Tallahassee, Chicago, all over the place here today. Awesome. Thank you so much for chiming in and letting us know where you are in the world. We're going to turn our cameras off here for just a couple of minutes to go through these slides so that we've got a nice recording for you. If you want to watch the recording on our YouTube channel, that is, what is it, youtube.com/GetOiling? And you can find us there. Let me go over here and share these slides with you. We're going to go through some training today. And again, I really, really would love to see you guys sharing your thoughts and chatting with me. I'm going to keep my Q and A and chat open as I'm going through these slides. Bear with me here just a second. Okay, Sean and Sydney are going to, we're going to be working together today, y'all. Thank you for being here and thank you for stepping up. All right, today we're going to talk about how to follow up with your leads using Get Oiling. So here's what's going on today. We're going to do some follow-up done, right? We're going to go over some training here today and we will do some walkthroughs in the systems. If you guys would like to see what it looks like to actually get these things done inside of Get Oiling. We're going to do some member website reviews as Sean and Sydney have just signed up and then we'll do some Q and A and support. So if you've got questions, if you came here today needing help with something, we can help you, even if it's while I'm up here flapping my gums, put it in the Q and A. If we can answer it right off, we'll answer it right here. If it's something that we need to walk through together, we can do that and save some space for that at the close of our call today. If you want to get on the list, if you're watching this as a recording in the future and you want to be on one of these live calls, it's getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you would like to sign up in advance to have dedicated space on a live call in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. So let's go ahead and turn off our distractions and get ready to take some notes. And let's talk. So what does follow-up look like for you guys? When you think about following up with somebody, what does the scenario usually look like? Are you texting? Are you sending a Facebook DM? Are you not following up? What are some scenarios that you feel like play out most often for you and your business? Leave me a comment in the chat. What does following up with a potential young living customer look like for you right now? Don't be shy. No judgment here. Let us know what that looks like in the chat. Are you sending a text? Are you calling? Do you pick up the phone and call? Do you send an email? Do you forget? And then maybe you, you see them post something on Facebook and you're like, oh, I'm supposed to send something to them, right? All right, Sydney says texting or Facebook DM, not very good at follow-up, trying to get more consistent at it. Awesome. Good thing you're here today. All right, so I'm curious. So we got nothing. We've got email with suggestion of what they mentioned, not doing well with follow-ups. I email, but I don't hear anything back. I call, send blogs from Young Living, not consistent. All right, got quite a few different approaches here. Let me ask you guys this. Go ahead and drop this in the comments. How much of your time are you dedicating to your follow-up? We've got all over the board. I text, I call on the phone, happy mail. Who sends happy mail? That is a super popular way to stay in touch with young living customers. It's really sweet thing to do. Follow-up is where the fortune is, but it's tiring when there's no system. Yes, that is so right. Haven't been following up because of life. I know it's no excuse, but it's life. That's right. It is. And be gentle with yourself. Let's talk about creating a system to make this something that's easy for you to manage. All right, now what I'm going to walk through here, you guys, I think is really important. I think that when we receive advice, sometimes we, we like to kind of discount it at face value if it doesn't align. Or we perceive it not aligning absolutely perfectly with our unique circumstance. The fact is, is that the way follow-up works and this and basically every business that's based on relationships is really the same in concept. So if this is somebody you met in the grocery store line, an old friend on Facebook, someone you met at a vendor event or at church or wherever, this is going to apply to anyone who could be a potential customer for you. All right, so this is for all of us. So the basics of follow-up are as follows. Number one, you see the giant circle here, one-on-one communication. This is the most important part of follow-up is one-on-one communication. There are other great things we can do to follow up and continue nurturing our relationship toward a conversion. That meaning moving towards someone saying yes to Young Living. And that can include things like targeted education or long-term nurture. And we'll get into the detail, the details of these in a minute. I think the most important thing to walk away from this slide with though, is that the thing that trumps them all is actually communicating with somebody one-on-one in a dedicated way. I say email, phone, text. Note, this is not the DMs. Really important distinction. All right, so the most important of all of these things is our one-on-one communication. Because relationships are the lifeline, the lifeblood of your business. This business is a relationship business. So what I want you to first think about when we're talking about following up with people is to treat people the way that you'd want to be treated. If you say you're going to do something, do it, right? Because you know how it feels when somebody doesn't follow through, if they say they're going to do something. You also don't like to receive things unsolicited, right? You don't want to be treated like a number or like a sale. So we do need to be mindful of what our follow-ups look like and specifically how we're making other people feel when we're engaging with this. So do you want, you know, 28 promotional emails sent to you? Or do you want answers to your questions? Right? Think about that before you engage with a follow-up. How would you like to be approached? How would you like to be treated? And then always, and this is so, so, so important. When you meet someone for the first time, maybe you're at a trade show, you're at a vendor event, something like this. And, and you have a connection with someone and they're actually really interested. They're like, oh, I'd love to know more about that thing you do. Or you're at a networking meeting and they say, oh, can you tell me more? Set an appointment, right? From meeting someone or connecting or reconnecting with someone, the very next most important step is that we put it on a calendar so that we have dedicated space that we are sitting down together and agreeing to share time and share information, right? You want to sit down and help them. They're going to agree to a time to do it, right? Then after you've met that person, if you haven't set up an appointment already, of course, you should do this either way. When you meet someone or you have had a conversation that could lead toward a share, right? A young living share. You want to reach out personally to that person within 24 hours of that happening. Within 24 hours after a vendor event, within 24 hours after getting someone's number, because you had a great conversation with them with their kids at the park, whatever that might be, reach out personally to them within 24 hours. This is really critical because there is a shelf life of our attention span. And this, this absolutely applies to our relationships and the things that, that we choose to engage with, right? If you signed up for an email list a year ago from some person who was offering a shopping list for paleo cooking or something, and they sent you no emails until a year later, when they suddenly wanted to start sending you promotional stuff for a new thing they're doing, you're probably going to mark them as spam because you've forgotten who they are, right? They're going to remember who you are. They're going to remember your conversation. More likely, they're going to remember those things within the first 24 hours. Can't stress that enough. Now we have Bam Fam. Who here has been paying attention to my trainings? Can anybody tell me what Bam Fam means? Gold star in the comments. What does Bam Fam stand for? Book a meeting from a meeting. Yes, Sydney. Excellent. So book a meeting from a meeting. Every time you meet with someone, figure out when the next time is you're going to get together, right? Don't you do this with family? You do this with people you love, like if family lives out of town or something, or people you don't see frequently. When you're getting together, you talk about when the next time is that you're going to get together, right? And when we were kids, we did this too, right? Like we never wanted the friendship to end, right? The sleepover is over, but when are we going to hang out again? Book a meeting from a meeting. Always have a goal to meet again and try to walk away from that meeting with commitment, a date on a calendar, commitment to go into another meeting with that person. And this doesn't necessarily have to mean formal meeting. It could mean, let's go get coffee on Tuesday. It could mean, hey, I've got some free time on Wednesday and I'd love to sit down with you for a few minutes. You know, I'd love, you know, the pandemic has taught me to love Zoom. Let's sit down together, whatever that might be. Book a meeting from a meeting, get together. And then of course, from that initial meeting or your follow-ups or whatever, make sure that you are taking notes and you add them to your contact manager and Get Oiling. Because this is what is going to keep you on top of things. Part of why it feels like such a huge stressful time investment to maintain follow-ups is because you're trying to stuff and store all of this information in your brain. If you're using your contact manager to remind you when you need to reach out to somebody and to keep your notes from the last time you talked, all you have to do is go in, read and refresh yourself and you're good to go like you were just on this yesterday, right? All right, now let's talk about secondary resources. So this is where if you guys have content from our content partners, for instance, like Grow Workspace, you know, and other content providers that have fantastic educational resources, classes, Zooms, text campaigns, email campaigns, lead magnets, all of this kind of stuff. All of these things are secondary to that relationship. Okay, so we want to send an indication, excuse me, send an educational campaign and resource after you've had a one-on-one conversation. So like we were talking about previously, the one-on-one conversation is the most important thing that you can have, and it is the thing that moves the needle in your business. If you know that there's a resource that could be beneficial for that person to read and receive and do something with, you ask them for a yes. Now, this is a psychological trick that I learned back when I was operating in sales, the majority of my working life. And that is, if you can get someone to say yes multiple times, like audibly, they say the word yes, or they type the word yes, then the likelihood of them saying yes to what you ultimately want to share with them is that much higher. So think about this, for instance, you've been talking to a friend who has been talking about a particular ailment or issue that they're dealing with. And, and you have an oil for that. It comes to mind. And you know, you also have a text campaign or a sway or something like that, that you could send to them that would show them how that could be something that's beneficial for them. Do you think it would be more effective to just pop it off and say, hey, here's a thing? We talked about a thing. Hey, here's a thing for you to look at. Or for you to say, hey, you know what? I've been thinking about what you said and how you're dealing with X problem. I have a resource that talks about a product that I think would be really helpful for you. If I shared that with you, is that something you'd be interested in taking a look at? Do you think they're going to be more likely to say yes, right? And actually go look, because now it's a commitment. They said, I will look at that thing, right? That's an implied commitment. Now they need to go look at that, not just because they're interested, but because it's sort of a contract with you, right? So get a yes before you send stuff out. And remember that these tools that you have, while incredible and easy to plug in and send from your Get Oiling system, they support your conversations. They don't replace them, right? Show of hands, does that make sense? Your educational resources, there's an oil for that, resources, your texts, your sways, your everything, even the funnels and stuff you create on your site and your website itself. These things support you in your mission to have these conversations that connect people to Young Living. They don't replace those conversations. So get in touch first and ask them if they want that info from you. And then you can ask even more questions, right? So tell me more about how that's, you know, what's happening for you there? How does that feel? What are you doing to get this problem solved? That way you can actually be more invested in helping to create a result with them, right? For them to overcome whatever that issue is that they're dealing with. You're not just being transactional and connecting a product to a person who said they have a problem, right? You're actually listening to that person and really investing in a way and helping them solve that problem. So use those resources that you have as a reason to connect and to dig deeper. If you're really excited because this month Grow Workspace created a resource, and this is true, in December, they have a 15-day sleek challenge, right? So you know, maybe you're talking to somebody who wants to get healthier and, and they're not just waiting for the new year. You can say, hey, you know what? I actually just recently got access to this really cool thing that I am going to be personally using even before the new year starts to help get myself in gear for really actually hitting my weight loss goals this year. Do, is that something that'd be interesting to you? Let them say yes or no. They're going to say yes, right? And then once they say yes, they're that much more likely to actually look at it. And plus, hey, isn't this a reason to go and reach out to somebody who, you know, maybe you saw them on Facebook and they commented on somebody's post and they're like, oh, man, I used to look like that. I wish I looked, looked like that again, right? And then you reach out and you say, hey, you know what? I've got a thing that I'm doing. I don't know if this is something you'd be interested in or not, but, and I don't want to sell you anything, but this thing's been really helpful to me. Do you want to look at it? Let them say yes. Let them say no. They might say no. They'll probably say yes, right? So that's what targeted education looks like and it is supplemental. It does not replace those one-on-one conversations. And then finally, water your garden. So we want to nurture and engage in our relationships so that we can have a fruitful harvest in our business, right? So our healthy relationships are not things that are transactional, right? And a healthy relationship with your customers isn't one where you just show up to tell them their order didn't process or that it's time for them to get on a subscription, right? Same thing with your leads, with your people who you should be following up with. We're not just reaching out because we need to share Young Living with them. We are reaching out to make a friend, to be a helpful human, to have a connection with another person, right? So if someone's not ready right now, if they don't have time or they're not really responding quickly or haven't answered the email that you've sent out after you met them at the, at the vendor event or whatever, don't leave them there, right? Keep coming back and touching up on them. You want to build a relationship with people. Part of the reason why you might not be hearing from people is because there hasn't been enough investment in the building of the relationship itself. If all you're doing is sending out broadcasts that are generic and not things that are based on a one-on-one relationship, that may be part of the reason why they're not responding. It might mean that you need to invest a little bit more in that person. So what I want you to do, really, and try to do this with everyone, is to rate your contact that obviously before they're a customer, rate them in your Get Oiling system so that you can automatically be notified to follow up with them long-term. If there are five, you're going to get notified every three days. And so every three days, your system's going to be like, hey, you should check in on so-and-so. And so you could send them a DM or go scroll through their, their social media real quick and, you know, see that they're, you know, they had a kid's birthday party and you could, you know, tell them how beautiful you thought the cake was or whatever, right? You know, you've got other options as well. If you feel like somebody's super lukewarm, maybe you just want to be reminded once a month to check in with them, right? And then if you get a new resource, like you do monthly with a lot of our content partners, that's a reason to reach out and see how they're doing, to ask them if they want to see this new resource that you've got. So again, instead of just assuming I've got a list, I've got a resource, I'm going to send this resource to everyone on the list. We're going to be so much more effective if we follow up, which is the one-on-one conversation, reaching out privately, sending an email saying, hey, I've got a resource that you might benefit from. You know, let me know. Is that something you'd like to see, right? Because you're going to be more effective. Does it take a little bit more time than just blasting out that campaign to everyone? Yes, absolutely. But it is 100 times more effective. All right. And then of course, if you're Bam Fam, book a meeting from a meeting. If you're keeping that pattern with the people you're connected to, always knowing when the next time is you're going to get together, then you're always going to stay connected and you're always going to be nurturing that relationship. So always be looking for ways to set those connections in stone. We're going to meet at this time. Come to my house. We're doing this and that, right? All right, so here's a big picture. Let's break down how this works. First, we meet someone, basically anywhere in person or virtual, and we have a brief conversation. Typically, you've said some kind of a sweet little elevator line where you're like, I helped this kind of person get XYZ benefit. You know, I'm a, you know, I'm a aromatherapy practitioner. I, I help people overcome difficult emotional circumstances using natural products, however you talk about yourself. And they go, oh, how does that work? And then you get their contact information because you can't go into it all right now. So whatever the resource or reason is, right? So if you're at a vendor table, you're giving away scans or you're doing a drawing or you, or you want to get your kids together, whatever it is, whatever reason you can find to get their contact information, phone or email, along with a reason for you guys to connect, meet up or touch base later, you're good, right? So you meet and you come up with a reason to get contact information and touch base in the future. And then within 24 hours, you gotta send something to them. And it needs to be personal. It really does. Try to be as personal as possible. Granted, if you went to a really busy vendor event, you've got a list of 25 people, then perhaps you're going to send a message to everyone using a personalization tag. So it says, hey, contact first name. So it says their name. It was really great meeting you yesterday. I would love to see how I can help you more with your goals around your wellness. Hit reply and let me know what your first goal is, right? If you've got a massive list and you just really can't see yourself sending a personalized email to every single person or you didn't make a contact with every single person, then you could use what I just described. But the majority of the time, you guys, when somebody's like, oh, how does that work? Oh, I'm interested in that. Then all you got to do is reach out, right? Get contact information, reach out and then be personal, right? Make reference to the conversation that you had. Don't be a salesperson here. Be a friend, right? And our goal here is to schedule to meet one-on-one in person, phone, Zoom, or if you've got an upcoming class or something like that, that you're doing in your community, whatever that might be. The goal is to get them to the next event Bam Fam, right? Our secondary goal is to let them know. And this is, you know, after we've had a conversation here, we ask if they want information that we have, right? That pertains to something that they have shared with you, a detail that they've shared with you. And then finally, long-term, let's just say that this is a person who doesn't seem particularly engaged or interested. Keep in touch and then pop back in at intervals to offer your content and resources if that's something that she wants, right? So don't let this be complicated. This really is a matter of being humans and being humans together. Really, really simple. We add value to each other's lives and we help each other. And that's what we're looking to do. We want value added to our life by having more great friends and connections. And we want to add value to other people's lives with the things that we've been blessed to know and use and share, right? Our number one job as a Young Living brand partner is to grow a gigantic network of massively rewarding relationships. How many of you have looked at your job that way? Or maybe better, better, better way to phrase this. Maybe show me your hands if you would love for that to truly feel like it's your job description. Your job is to grow a gigantic network of massively rewarding relationships. That's all we're here to do, you guys. This is the reason why network marketing is so amazing. This is our job. We create relationships and sometimes those relationships turn into things that grow abundantly for all of us, right? It's a pretty cool thing. So how you do your follow-up with the people? Well, question, how do you follow up with people that you love already? So maybe think back to that example I was giving earlier. Maybe you're sitting down with a cousin that you haven't seen in years and maybe she just, you know, moved 30 miles away or something. Are you going to leave that coffee meeting or lunch or her at your house? And not know the next time you're going to get together? You're just going to leave it hanging? It's somebody that you love to see. Do you just leave it and then maybe I see you sometime? That's not how we treat the people that we love already, right? And we want to build this massive network of rewarding relationships. That's a lot of love to spread around. Don't do this with your people, right? This is no different. You don't leave that circumstance hanging. You don't leave that relationship hanging, right? So all we're doing, the only difference between the way you interact with the people that you already love and know and love to be around who aren't necessarily associated with your business, all we're doing differently here is working smarter by staying organized with your contacts, right? And I encourage you to include your contacts for your family members and, and, and the people that you want to stay in touch with for purposes that are not expressly related to your business inside of your Get Oiling contact manager, because this is a relationship business. Your grandmother may buy oils from you. Your third cousin may too. That's not the reason why you're connecting with them, right? And it's not the only reason why you're connecting with the people that you meet in your day-to-day life or on your social, right? So give yourself reminders. Remind yourself of the things that you need to do. Leverage the tools that you have access to, to stay organized and know what comes next, right? If, I, I get it, like in network marketing, we are kind of blending personal and business, right? In our relationships, but it doesn't have to be something that's weird or uncomfortable. We just need to treat everyone like they're our best friend. I mean, isn't that how you want to feel when you read, when you're interacting with other people? If you could go through life and everyone treated you like their best friend, wouldn't you feel awesome? We need to start doing that for each other and that's what makes you a really attractive person to be around, right? All right, so let's talk about a follow-up checklist. These are the things that we need to do to make sure we're following up correctly. First, add your contact to the Get Oiling contact manager. And while you're at it, grab their email address or their phone number and paste it into your favorite social networks search bar. Typically, if that email address or that phone number is associated with that person, their profile will pop up, right? So if this is somebody that you've never met before, you can actually look them up, find them on social, right? Add, add them on social if you feel comfortable with it, but definitely add them to your contact manager and take your notes. Then send an, a personal email or a text to them within 24 hours of meeting. Or if you've already, if you already know them, within 24 hours of where that conversation went, where they said, oh, how does that work? Or, oh, that's interesting. Tell me more. Or how do you do that? Or whatever the question is that they ask that, that opens you up to be able to share Young Living. So send a personal email or text really as soon as possible. Then set an appointment to keep that conversation going. Let's chat again soon. Be a person who keeps appointments. Use a calendar. If you don't use a digital calendar yet, please start doing it. Set an appointment. You are a busy professional. Set an appointment so that you can respect your time and others can as well by setting appointments with you. Nothing weird about that. And then Bam Fam, always book a meeting from a meeting. Always know when you're getting together next. Take notes, add them to your contact manager. And then apply a campaign or send resources, educational resources, sways, campaigns and things like this after you have asked if they will, if they would be willing to take a look, right? They say yes, send away, right? And then rate your contact in your Get Oiling system for easy reminders so that you can already know when you're supposed to follow up with them. You don't drop the ball. All you have to do is just shoot off a quick email or a text and say, hey, I've been thinking about you. Hey, I saw you've been up to something. How's that going? Hey, I'd love to catch up. What are you doing on Wednesday at two, right? Rate your contacts and then continue the process of just staying in touch and being a good friend and, and showing up and being that light in their life. All right. So in your follow-ups, if you're creating content, so guys, if you're blogging, if you're creating YouTube videos, if you're, if you're a content creator, definitely offer to add them to your email newsletter for updates. And if you have a lead group or if you have a lead magnet, if you have a funnel, ask them if they would like access to it, right? You don't have to keep your digital world and your belly-to-belly in-person world separate. These are like, this is a unified world, right? So ask people if they want access to these digital tools that you've been creating. It can deepen your relationships with people if you use it strategically. But just don't treat them like a number, right? Don't let your leveraged communications take the place of real connection. Because nobody wants to feel like a number. We want to feel like your best friend, right? So let's go take a look at this in action. If you guys have questions, please add them to the Q and A. I'll go ahead and turn the video on here and we can get back to our chatting and everything. And guys, team, you're welcome to do that as well if you'd like. Let me see if there's any questions about this specifically, so I can show you guys as I'm walking through and then we'll get into all of this. I do see there's an off-topic Amanda that we'll get to here in just a minute. Sarah says, I used to broadcast promotions to everyone than had people opt out for my regular wellness newsletter. Only 15 to 20 out of 500 just did some unsubscribe from my emails entirely. Did I do something wrong? So that's, I mean, so if you're broadcasting promotions to everyone, then the people who didn't ask for those promotions or who feel like maybe those promotions don't then the people who didn't ask for those promotions or who feel like maybe those promotions don't pertain to them well enough, they will opt out and it's not an affront to you or it's not necessarily to say that you did something wrong. It's just that they're, they're saying, this isn't for me. And that's why it is so important to really base as much as possible where we're talking about Young Living, right? So if you have another business, you're getting leads from other places, like there's, there's a digital marketing approach here. What I'm talking about is very specifically Young Living. And Young Living is a relationship business. There are some people who choose to treat this like an affiliate marketing opportunity. And the fact is, is that it just isn't, right? There are aspects that can blend over. There are things that you can do. But your success, especially if you're interested in actually getting like the duplication and the residual income that you can get in this industry, you can't replace the relationships. So where you have promotional lists, you really just want to make sure, or any promotional message at all, you want to make sure that that is going to people who have said, I want to hear that, right? So for instance, if you had a lead magnet that is offering, you know, a freebie or a challenge or something and you're leading into a sales campaign for a product, that's an instance where sure, you send those broadcast messages or that campaign of the promotions. But for Young Living, we don't want to promote it, people, right? We want to, we want to show them that we're here for them, not that we are someone who's selling something. Although we, I mean, we kind of are, we're not. Young Living is selling something. We are connecting people to Young Living, right? So I know, we just kind of want to be mindful of that. And always err on the side of sending an email that sounds like you're writing it to one person and asking them to hit reply. Right? Asking them to say, tell me what you think about this, you know, or, or tell me what you would prefer. You are going to be served so much more greatly over time by taking just a little bit more time to connect more personally and more meaningfully. And that will feed your, sort of your bulk option, options there as well. Let's see, Sarah says also on my campaigns, I have a personal welcome for opt-in that is generic. Is this enough? So it just depends on what they're opting into, honestly. And maybe we can talk about this here in just a minute. Alright, so I'm going to show you guys real quick before we get into anything else here. I'm gonna open up the chain account. So I can show you guys just the, the visual of what this looks like in your system. Okay, so, so this is your dashboard. If you have to-dos, they're gonna show up here. So if you've given yourself a to-do, then contacts you may wish to reach out to, this is gonna actually show your rated contacts, which is pretty cool. So let's just go over here real quick and, and look at this contact. This is me. If I click here, I can rate me and get reminded every three days to check in and reach out every week, every month, every quarter or annually or never, right? So we can rate our contact, which is just a really quick cheat code to, to see what's going on here. I can shoot off a quick personal message or a quick, a quick text, right? After I've maybe added this person to my system. I can go down here and I can add a note. Maybe we met in person, maybe we talked on social media. Add a note here, say when it was and then, and then add those notes here so that we can always be on track with our people. Now, one thing that I did leave off here is follow-up plans. You can, if you have a specific order of operations that you like to follow, maybe following of an event, for instance, if you're using our events, we do have training on this on our YouTube channel. You could apply a follow-up plan to have more specific follow-up instructions given to yourself or suggestions to-do's given to yourself on a day-to-day basis. But that is a, a training on another, another session. So that's basically it, you guys. Follow-up really does look like making sure that you're reaching out when you know you want to reach out by either just rating the contact or giving yourself a to-do to follow up. And then every time that you communicate with them, you leave notes for yourself and you keep that conversation going. Always booking a new meeting from another meeting. Could always create a meeting for them here if you wanted to go and set up something on Zoom and you guys meet personally, you can send that email off. Lots of cool stuff that you can do from our system to make your life a little easier. Okay, so that's pretty, pretty simple. Let me go through the Q and As here real quick. And actually, since we're here, don't want to take too terribly long because we do have two, two people that are committed to these reviews. But Sarah, I'd like to bring you out here to chat real quick so that we can get specific about what you're talking about and, and we can, you know, kind of get some more specific advice. And sorry, that was without warning. I hope you can talk.
Thanks, Ashley. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Um, so I, I'm a naturopathic doctor as well as Young Living and I just, I kind of just started up with the business again. When, actually, when I signed up Marketing Sense closed and I found you guys and I was really impressed with all you had. So I, um, I have a, when they opt in to like, I have a, get a free essential oils resource guide or they sign in up for my, I, I just do a regular weekly email just on health topics in general. And then I have like a, I set up a campaign where it says, you know, well, thank you for joining my community. You'll be receiving some emails if there's anything I can help you with, just to reply. And then it goes through the kind of the, the, it has that survey that you guys have for the new prospects as a follow-up the day after. So that's kind of, that's what I meant with the opt-in, the generic message.
Okay, and where are these contacts coming from?
Mostly either through Facebook or through just the website, my website, my other website.
So what you could certainly do, and you can always remove a campaign from a contact. And I would actually recommend this as a practice, like if you're using the new prospects campaign. We don't want to, like, so the new prospects campaign is really there to help get your person engaged quickly. But the goal is to get onto a one-on-one conversation with them as quickly as possible. And once you're on that one-on-one conversation, you can remove that campaign from them. And, and then you can actually choose what targeted information you want to share with them. And now you're, you've kind of, what's the best way to put this? We, we've kind of got a ball that we're back, we're wanting to pass back and forth here, but we gotta get the ball in your court first and we need them to throw it at you. And so what that means is, is, you know, they walked onto the court when they became your lead. And when they respond to one of those emails, they're taking the ball and they're tossing it to you. And once you've got that in your hands, you don't need the campaign to be doing the work for you anymore. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Cause now we can be back and forth with them.
Okay, so if they, if I email them, like, a lot of people respond to that survey and that they'll have their goals. And then I'll say, you know, this is great. There's stuff I can help you with. Just let me know. And a lot of them don't even respond to that. So do I just take them off the campaign after that or?
Yeah, so what I would do here, if they're responding to the survey, then, then I would definitely go and, and send and perhaps, how would I do this? In your case, you probably have like, like a discovery call or something like that, right? You have like an intro call that you offer to prospective clients?
Yes.
Okay, so what I would do is offer that. So copy the existing Get Oil and New Prospects campaign. And then in those subsequent campaign messages, have really that primary call to action be to get on a call with you, right? And so that way they know you're someone who's there to help them. That's, that's kind of what I would recommend there. Because if they're, well, okay, so there's a couple of things, right? They can, they can engage with you passively or in this case, not engage, right? Are you able to see in these cases if they're actually opening up the emails, reading them, clicking the links, that kind of thing?
I can see that in the dashboard. Or like if I go to their name, is, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So for, for instance, like if you, hmm. I know it's, it's, it's person by person, basically. And, and the best way I can, I could explain to, to operate with this is to not necessarily look at them like numbers, like you would if you were, you know, running an ad for your, your naturopath business on Google or something like that. But, but really look at these as people who have maybe walked into a store. And, and maybe they are just browsing and they don't really want to communicate with anybody and that's okay. But you just really want to make sure that you let them know priority above all else that, that you're available to help them.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that this is specifically for you because you, you have experience in consulting and working with people on wellness. You've got that added edge there, you know, with the letters behind your name and all of that kind of thing. You could really lean into, lean into that. Because it's those one-on-one conversations that are going to move people toward Young Living, of course.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope that we can get together on a future call and, and maybe look at, at some of the things you're building in the system. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Alright, Amanda, your question was not related to today's topic. But that's okay. So would love to know if there's a way to export names that have a specific tag. For example, I run a promotion, they have to text me a keyword that tags them with X tag. I would love to be able to export those names to then copy and paste into a random name picker. Is there a way to do this without manually typing them from all, all from the list? Greg?
Yes, I can totally demo that. I got my screen ready to go here.
Beautiful, thank you.
Might be a ball might be in my core here. Yeah, so in your contact manager, it's pretty simple. So first, obviously filter by the tag. I think there's a tag in here called lead that has, oh no, it's, I think the one I wanted, those game plan. Anyway, doesn't matter. Pick your tag, it'll filter it down, go under actions and then bulk contact actions. And the bottom here will be export contacts to CSV. Click on that and then you can download it, choose whether or not you want the tags included or not. Download the file, go into CSV and then go to your favorite random number generator, you know, random.org or whatever. And then associate it with a line number. So yeah, that's how you do it. Otherwise, if you go through contact settings, it'll export all your contacts. So if you go through the contact manager and then go through that bulk actions thing and do the export, then that will be where you get it.
Fabulous. That sounds really fun. Keep us updated on how that goes for you. That's really exciting. Alright, CT, you asked, we have a, a survey for leads. Yes, so you can create your own sort of survey using custom pages and we do have a training on that on our YouTube channel. But what we were just talking about is actually something that's done for you, that's built into the new prospects campaign. So it's a pre-made campaign that you can use as is, it's already written. You can have it attached to your website. Or you could apply it to your contacts if you wish. You could also copy it and make it your own. So that does include a built-in to the system sort of survey where they could say, I'm interested in, you know, body wellness or skincare or babies or whatever. So that's actually something that's, is in our system. Okay, alright, so let's get to, let's get to some reviews here while we have time. Sean, I'm going to bring you out to chat. Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
I am amazing. I'm super excited. I'm super excited.
I'm excited you're here too. So what's up? What are, what are we chatting about today?
Okay, so I finally want to make Get Oily my main website. So what I did is I cut and pasted, basically copied and pasted into Get Oily from my website. And now I'm stuck. So the, some of the things, we made all the pages. Some of them duplicate pages, like I had a blog page, I had a, you know, all of that. So that to me is not working like I expected it to work. So there's some glitches and also if you can just, you know, go over it, let me know what you think, what I should do, what I shouldn't do. You know, things like that. So, and yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So do, first of all, do you, do you mean for this to be here? For, for you to have this, this landing page over top of your homepage?
No.
Okay, so what we'll do and let me, oh, I am signed in as you. So let me go over here. Like, can I do this? Okay, let me show you how we take that off. That is under, is it customize my site? Okay, it's under customize my site. And then this is require landing page to visit the homepage. This is a setting that is really better used if you're using one of our built-in themes. But if you have your, if you have your own, we're gonna go no landing page required.
Okay.
And save that. So now if we go to view your site, it's gonna go straight to this page that you've got here. Yeah. Fabulous, okay. I love the vibrant colors. Love, love, love the vibrant colors. I like how you did the leaf back here. Alright, so tell me a little bit about your goal when someone reaches the site and, and kind of what you're wanting to direct them to.
Okay, so my goal is usually when I'm talking to anyone, or, you know, I always direct them to the site, not to this particular site, but to my site, right? And it comes with, cause I do a lot of events, I do, you know, things like that. And so what I like to do is merge the two together because I do a lot with, with Young Living, I incorporate that into my business. And I wanted to just work together where somebody can come to this, this website. They can get information on oils, they can also get information on, you know, my testimonials and things like that. And also for the events that I, I do on a regular basis.
Okay, okay. Oh, you've got videos. This is good. Okay, so let's see. So first things first, I would recommend, I, I, I would recommend kind of shrinking down the different menu options up at the very top. There, there's some different ways to kind of organize. Let me give you an example. Jackie has, she has a lot of things that she does as well. So we do have like the main menu where we've got about and to go and shop. She put the shop here as well. Under learning, there's the blog, there's events, she's got different types of trainings that are available. Working with her could be a number of different things. If there's somebody who are clients or of courses or programs or of Young Living, then they can hop into one of these guys. And then of course, this link goes straight over to the Young Living site. This is something that's a priority for her because personally for her, she is often saying, go to JackieMcLaughlin.com and click shop Young Living because she's already talked somebody through what they need to do. For, for like her enrolling. But how you organize and set this up, I think is really going to depend on how you're actually operating the business. So what are the words coming out of your mouth when you're on social or in person? What are you telling them to go to the website and do that kind of thing? And that'll kind of help you see how you can organize that a little more effectively. Let me see. So like for instance, essential oils, you know, this is, this could be an educational thing, this could be a, a work with me thing. If you offer several different types of discovery calls, you know, that could be for different types of, of programs and things that you offer. You know, you could have, you know, different ways to work with me and a page that might have essential oils and the different types of calls you offer, that kind of thing, like under your services. Oh, I love this. This is awesome. You do hair?
Yes. That is so cool. That's how I started. I lost my hair and found essential oils all at the same time.
Oh my goodness.
Incorporated into my business. So, and, and I'm a, a health coach. And what I did is I jumped out on Facebook and closed my shop and now I'm doing wellness full-time.
Oh, wow. How amazing is that? That's so good. One thing that I would recommend, actually, hold on, where was I just? So you see how you've got a dark, this, this dark menu up here?
Okay.
I would recommend that you try to keep it consistent across your site. Cause it almost feels like you're on a different website when we come over here. And also, oh, yeah, because are, you see how the, the menu items are still in black? We actually can't read. So you, you know where to do that?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay, let's go look real quick. So I think this is, do we call that one main essentials? There we go. So that's gonna be in your settings. And it's right here. So under header and menu.
Okay.
And we're gonna pick lights. And let me actually see. So we've got dark down there and then we've got, okay, so we've got a dark footer across the board. That's fine. But we want to keep the header light. So if we save that and we come back over here and we go, see, I'm not even sure where that was. But it's gonna, it'll be the same across the board here. So, so yeah, what, what I would recommend is, is maybe you have a shop menu link where they can shop at these affiliate products that you have. Maybe there's a learn link where they can go to your blog, they can peruse classes and events. Then there can be a services page where if somebody, you know, or, or work with me page where they could sign up for specific things, that kind of thing. I, I love how vibrant and welcoming you have made this. I, I think that, I think you've done a really lovely job. Um, I, I love how vibrant and welcoming, uh, you have made this. I, I think that, I think you've done a really lovely job with the colors and sort of how you tie things together really cleanly. What else? What else? You have, you have a review scheduled coming up, right? Cause I think I saw you were on the, um, on the calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So we're getting back together soon. So I want you to, to put some of these things into place. And then we can, and then we can get into that a little further. One more thing, and, and this would be sort of a final piece, maybe give, you know, put some thoughts, uh, to this before we're together again. Um, when they land on your website, what is the most important thing you want them to do? Uh, and the, the quick answer is to take action, but to take action on what is the, the one that I want you to be thinking about? Um, because when people arrive here, we want them to connect with something that'll get them a result. And of course to tie them into what you offer in your business. And you do offer a lot of things. Uh, but maybe the thing that we should be putting just real big upfront here is I got a lot going on, you're gonna want all of it, get on this list, right? And, and to have something like that right up here at the top so that at least we're grabbing those names to put them onto your newsletter.
So what do you mean? Okay, say that again, at the top, meaning
Above the fold.
Above, okay, when they come to the website, when I'm sending them to the website and I'm a landing page, basically, right? Similar to what was on there originally, but how do I, how do I, um, say it to them? Well, for freebie?
So, yes, uh, but that freebie could be, um, and I'm about to find this training for you. Um, cause I did a website training on this and it kind of walks through all of this and it has a template. You could kind of see what, what I mean by this. But, um, but you don't have to go and make a freebie. You could say, you know, I'm a woman with a lot going on and if you are this type of person, you're gonna want to keep in touch with me. Um, the best way to do that is to get on this list here. And then all you're doing is saying into your name and email to get on my, you know, get on my exclusive list for updates or something like that. Uh, and that's a perfectly fine place to start. Especially with the variety of things that you're offering. There's never anything wrong with just getting people onto a signup list out of the gate. So there was a website like, what was that? Custom homepage? Was it this one? I think it was this one. Yes, it is this one. Cause it has the resource bundle and yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's got a, it's got Canva templates, it's got a page template. Uh, and that on our YouTube is called Custom Homepage for Young Living Brand Partners. Uh, so this is one that I highly recommend that you watch just to get some insights. I, I don't think that you need to, you know, redo your page by any stretch of the imagination. But you can use what you see there to kind of inform how you say things and where you put them.
Okay. Um, I did have a question. I call myself being prepared by writing it down. Okay. We kind of answered a couple of them already. Did the other group contact? Oh, um, the groups. So I want to, I want to move my lead group to, um, to Get Oiling. I have a lead group on Facebook, um, and I'd like to move that to Get Oiling, but I don't know how to. And, um, the survey for new prospects, well, that was new for me.
Okay, so the, um, so if you go to get oiling.com forward slash move your groups, this is a, this is a course that you can get access to. Right now it's totally free. Uh, it is, uh, it's a complete walkthrough if my computer would like to cooperate. There we go. Uh, so this is about moving groups off of Facebook. It includes a complete walkthrough and step-by-step and examples of a lead group. Uh, so there, there is, a lot of folks use this to create a member, like a Young Living brand, uh, brand partners who are serving their customers, like to create a group like that off of Facebook. But there's also a lead group, uh, example in here as well that kind of gives you, and there's a fully built example that you can follow that's in there.
Okay, okay.
And then the, the new, the new prospect survey, uh, is simply something that you'll be able to find if you go into your, um, into campaigns. And I think if we search for prospects, there we go. So there's the new prospects. And it's not editable as is, uh, but you can, uh, you can actually create a copy of it. So, um, this is, uh, where we send them. Actually, no, I can't do that. So you can't see it unless you actually receive it. So send it to yourself and you can see what they see. Uh, but you can actually, um, if you wanted to make a copy of this, you just hit copy, you give it a new name and then you can make it your own.
Okay, now one more question. Um, for my events, I do, I, you know, and they have the events there, but a lot of time I haven't put anything in there of my events that I'm doing like on social media and things like that. So when I'm doing the postings on social media, is it, is it wise to do it within Get Oiling also to my, you know, cause that's the downline and people that I've done, um, uh, oily, oily classes with? You know, uh, one-on-one, essential oils, one-on-one. When I do essential oils, one-on-one, everyone doesn't sign up, but they all go on my Get Oiling list. So would you, would you recommend or suggest that I keep that going across the board, even though I say to them, look for me on social media, but you know, nine times out of ten, they really don't, right? Or if they do, I can't tell when they do. So do you recommend that I do that?
I think, I think you answered your question a little bit there. So, um, so yeah, um, the only person who's really paying close attention to your business is you, and that's always going to be the case. Uh, so there is no harm in broadcasting the same message out through multiple channels. So, um, I, I mean, if, if someone sees it on Facebook and an email from you, then that's like a double bonus. They got a reminder. Uh, but I would, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't shy away from that at all. Uh, and in fact, um, and I was, I was talking to a client about this this morning. Even if you're not creating blog and video content yet, like that you're, you know, syndicating out and sharing little tips and, you know, kind of building your list in that way. If you're, even if you're not doing that yet, but you created a thing, anything, I made, I, I made a post on Facebook. Come over here and comment and let me know what you think. Um, I've got an event coming up. Here's how you can register for it. It's also on Facebook. Like every reason that you have to just do a little tap on your list, uh, that email list of, of everyone and say, hey, that kind of thing. If you think this would be helpful, here you go. But I would, before you email your whole downline, uh, things that are not specific to Young Living or really your whole downline period, unless they're, they're, they're just your personals. I would send out an email asking them to opt themselves in to get those updates, get that permission from them. Um, in most digital businesses, uh, we don't walk in with a big list, a big customer list to start emailing. Uh, we start building this in a more traditional way, but because you can download from your VO contact information for your entire organization, even if they're not your personal contacts. We do need to take that, that consideration there. So I would, you know, create an automation or even just a simple landing page. Like the one on your homepage that, that you want to put together there that says, hey, here are some of the things that I'll be talking about that I want to be sharing with you. If that's something that's interesting to you, then, you know, fill this form out or click here or whatever. Uh, and that way, um, the tag that you apply to those people, you can filter out before you send out all that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great questions.
That was, um, I, yeah, you answered a lot of, a lot of my questions before you even got to me.
Well, I look forward to more of them when we get back together soon.
Yes. And, um, I'm not going to get a confirmation for that because I did that and didn't put it in my calendar right away.
Oh, yeah, sure. So I believe if I could find this. Uh, we'll, we'll have to, we'll, we'll figure this out via email. Cause I'm not sure. I, I think I saw the application come through, but I don't think that I saw, um, the calendar notification yet. So
Okay.
We'll figure it out. I think you're in touch with Colin about that anyway, maybe. I don't know.
Yep. I thought this was it, actually, to be honest with you. I thought this was it.
Okay, well, you can do it again.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Well, we'll talk soon, Sean. Uh-huh. All right, one more. And this is a quick, um, where's my Q and A? Here we go. Sydney, uh, would like some help on the parallax background. We can do that. Um, and also, uh, CT, I see that you have your hand up. Will you, uh, shoot me a message? Uh, here and let me know if you would like help with anything or if your hand is still up from, from something else, or if you have a question. I don't want to leave you hanging there. Hi, Sydney.
Hi.
All right. So let's talk about your parallax.
Yeah, I, I think I'm still struggling with it, but I hope it's an easy fix and it's, it seems like, not pointless, but like, I mean, it obviously is not gonna like make or break my business, but it's something that I wanted to like implement because I thought it looked cool. So.
Yeah, hey, that's fine.
And I was, uh, I asked in the Facebook group, the same question. I probably should have added a picture in to show what I was talking about, um, but I'm, I'm still having trouble putting the background in, um, and making it show up because I want a different background around like my sections, like my page sections. But I, I think the parallax background is what I want on like the actual background.
Okay, what page is this on your site?
Um, I think it was the about me page.
Okay.
Probably. No, I think it was that one.
Okay, let's take a look. Okay.
Yeah, so I have the color block sections in there and I want to keep those. Um, I feel like I need to revamp that part because it's, it's a lot of info, but, um, I want the parallax background in the back, but to also continue keeping these color blocks. I kind of like that.
Okay, okay. So one of the things that you could definitely do is, um, just create an image with this, um, with this color background. Um, and you could play around with it that way. Greg, I, I, this is not something I know for sure, or, or Julie. Do you parallax over color? Is that a thing? Like, does, does the, or do you need to have an image back there?
You'd have to have an image back there, but I mean, I suppose you could, I was thinking about that. Like if you have an image that's in PNG format and is transparent, then that should, so through on the background color. I've never tried that. So, you know, don't quote me on it, but you could possibly do something like that.
So, um, so yeah, what you use, um, use an image or even if it's like an image with a very subtle pattern. Um, and then if you're using that image, yeah, if you're using that image in both places and I, I, I'm with you, I definitely do recommend that you break this up a bit. Uh, you know, have an image or, you know, kind of give it, give it some break. Um, and then I would also recommend in this section, um, it's going all the way to the edges. Um, you want it to, what is, is it can cover, contain? Hold, let's, let's, let's look at that real quick. Like I, I know how to do things, but I don't always know like how to name them. Okay, um, uh, full, so normal background section as opposed to full. Do you see how it, it stretches all the way to the edges of the page? Um, it's going to read a little better this way. Right? Um, and it's, and it's just, it's going to show up better on your devices. So I'm going to go and save that for you. But yeah, I definitely do recommend, uh, breaking this up just a little bit, maybe even having, you know, parts of these phrases like this as an example. I'm going to move that over here and I'm, I'm going to undo all of this. So you can like do this to your liking. But I'm going to sw- swap this over to like a heading. Oop. Maybe, maybe I'm not going to do that. I'm going to make it bigger. But you know, just, just to, to draw the eye to something, right? Um, as they're kind of going through the page, um, anything to break it up. Um, it's, it's actually really good for you to have a lot of text on, on page per the search engines. Like they, they really, they, they SEO likes longer content. Uh, but people don't want to feel like they're working or like reading a term paper or something. So we need to like do our part to kind of visually break that up. Uh, but yeah, I would, I would pop a, a, a picture back here. If you want a parallax effect where you're kind of scrolling over something. Uh, and then, um, and then maybe make this into multiple sections. So if you want, I'm trying to think of a page that I know of that does that the whole way down, aside from like, just, um, this one. Which is a template from the training I was just talking about. My browser is really slow today. Um, there we go. So this is parallax, what's happening over those flowers right here. And if you have parallax sections that have the same image and the same settings in them, you look like everything, it looks like everything's scrolling over the same image on the page the whole time, right?
That's kind of what I was trying to get.
Yeah. So you're going to want to, so if you want to do something like this, by all means, like use, use the template here if you want to. Cause that's free for you. Uh, but, but you will probably want to actually create these little sections here like we have here. Um, where, you know, it's really more like punctuations or questions, engagement pieces. And then the rest of the text is on like the normal, you know, sort of background. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
Can you go back to the, um, yeah, so with like the brown background and then the white background, like those sections, is that not the actual background of these pages? Like is the flowers the background?
So that's, that's how it makes it look, right? But each of these sections has its own background. So this section has this brown color background. This section has an image with a parallax background. Uh, this is a section with a white background. This is, uh, I copied this section uh, and, and moved it down and then changed the words on it. Also copied and, and basically because it's the same settings and it's a parallax, uh, image background. It looks like the whole page background is that, but it's not.
Okay, so I just need to add extra sections in? And make them, uh, the same and copy them. Okay.
That's right.
Cause that's what I was struggling with.
The thing that you want to be parallax is this like sort of middle, like this, the section in the middle here. Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you for your question and I hope that that was super helpful.
Yes, I think it'll help.
Okay, great. Feel free to come back, get a review. We'll talk some more about this.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to shut you off so quickly. Thank you. All right. CT, you had a question here. Um, if you go over to the training, I believe, um, we have it in the chat. I'll make sure that we include it in the, um, in the replay as well. Um, on our YouTube channel, that custom homepage for Young Living Brand Partners. Let me grab that here real quick and type it as an answer to your question. Um, in the description of that YouTube video, there is a resource bundle. If you're logged into your Get Oiling account, uh, all you have to do is click it and you could import it into your account. Follow the video, uh, that walks you through it, edit the Canva templates and make that page your own and set it as your homepage. That whole video should show you how to do it. Awesome. Okay. Great questions, you guys, and just excellent all around. So happy that you all made it here today. I hope that this is helpful to you. Uh, bring a friend next time. We're back same time next week. Noon Eastern, uh, sign up for updates for this training at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Before to see you guys soon. Bye.
Bye.